I know.
Well, they reopened up by Branson Parkway where they were.
Um, did you call the role play?
Yes.
Mr. Gao.
Here.
Mr. Parrish.
Here.
Mr. Henning.
Here.
Mr. Madrell. Mr. Haas.
Here.
Mr. Wilkerson.
Here.
Mrs. Towers.
Here.
Mr. Trumpus.
Here.
That's the forum of Stanford Board of Edutables. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, any agenda changes? No. Okay, at this time I'd like to welcome the public tonight and also Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Also, at this time, the Board of Education meeting is setting this part aside for public comments. There will be an additional time set aside during the truth in taxation hearing for the public to make comments on the proposed 2016 tax levy. I respectfully ask that those wanting to comment on 2016 tax levy, please hold their comments until the truth in taxation hearing. So if anyone would like to address the Board of Education on any other matter at this time, you may do so. Okay, nobody addressing the board. In that case, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Everybody's had a chance to go over the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions, additions, or corrections to the consent agenda? If not, any motion to accept. Mr. Perry, second, and Mr. Henning, will you start the voting tonight with, oh, Mr. Madrell?
Aye.
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 Gary.
Adam.
Motion passes. Committee reports, there's none.
We had the personnel committee, but that will be discussed during our full session.
Mr. Wilkerson, student member report, if you have one to see.
All right, I do. So yesterday, we wrapped up another semester with conclusion of finals week. Most seniors, though, like myself, were exempt from finals and ended their semester last Friday. So we get a nice longer break. But we will resume school on Wednesday, January 4th. With the holiday season coming about, many different extracurricular activities gave back to the communities. And I think this really attests to the character of our student body. It took a lot of time and effort to put these programs together, and we really did a good job of that. Student Council had their annual class collection competition, which was a money collection that they kind of, they made a game out of it. So there's a, the prize is a cookie party where all the student council members bring in a whole bunch of cookies and the winning class gets to eat and just kind of have fun. But the money raised goes towards Christmas presents for each children in the community. So it's a really good cause. The competition takes place between third hour classes within the school. And the winning class this year was Mrs. Farners' third hour Spanish three-four class, which happened to be my class. So we got, we got the nice big cookie party, and it was a lot of fun. FCC LA had their annual toy drive for the Family Resource Center in St. Louis. This is really unique because the kids actually need to go and deliver the toys to the kids that are at this Family Resource Center. And if you don't really know what that is, that's when mothers can come in and get resources for their children that they need if they don't have the money to get it, which is a really great cause. And everyone I know that's done this said it's an amazing experience because they get to interact with the kids directly. And it's really cool because you don't get that experience every day, and it's really moving to them. And then FCA started a new tradition of collecting toys for fire trucker toys, which is, what they do is they collect toys and they send them out to local hospitals for kids that are in the hospital over Christmas, which is a really, really cool charity as well. So I think we collected over 40 toys through the entire student body, which is awesome. And they're going to be delivered on Christmas Day to kids that can't get out of the hospital. Athletics, the boys' basketball team is having a solid start to their season. Next game is tomorrow against Columbia, which is a makeup from last Friday's game. Girls' basketball is also doing pretty well. Their next game is the 27th at the Jerseyville Tournament against, boys' bowling is having an awesome season. Drum Carpenter bowled a 300 last week, which is pretty incredible. They're currently ranked second in their division, and their next home match is against Steelville on the 27th at Belvedere Bowl. Girls' bowling is also having a great season. They're ranked third in their division, and their next match is also against Steelville on the 27th. Cheerleading's in their competitive seasons. They've had competitions so far, Highland and Pinneyville, and their next competition is the IHSA sectional, which I think that date is to be announced so far, but it's in late January. Scholar Bowl, I had to put this one in there for my Scholar Bowl friends. They're having a good season. Their record's eight and one right now. And their next match is a quad match on January 10th in Jerseyville. Performing arts, our marching band season is coming, has come to a close. So pep band and concert band are now in full swing. The concert band had their Christmas concert December 13th, and from what I heard, that went really, really well. Several students also were selected to attend the statewide Prairie Honor Band, which is an honor band where they bring in the best students from all the different schools, and they get to perform as one big band. It's pretty cool. That took place Tuesday, November 27th. And that's all I got for you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Wilkerson? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Mrs. Jung for the principal report.
Merry Christmas to everybody. Welcome, Julie Kaczynski from our faculty here tonight from our math department. A couple of things here in our academics. I just announced that 25 students from Freeburg High School earned Illinois State Scholar recognition this year. This is an increase from the 17 that were honored last year. Selection is based on either ACT and SAT scores, class rank, class size. Just for the difference in the classes, we had 158 students at the end of the junior year in 2016 and will have 164 at the end of 2017. So just a few students difference, but more students achieving that academic success. So that's great. FCHS also has some exciting changes to the curriculum coming up in social studies, business, and ad, which is going to be discussed later this evening. Guidance counselors Anne Minor and John Young are busy preparing because as soon as we get back from the Christmas break, all of a sudden we'll be starting registration for all the juniors, sophomores, incoming graduates. They'll be going to the grade schools and testing the eighth graders and going to parent information nights. So the seniors are going to be rolling out, and all the new kids are going to be coming in, but they'll be busy getting registration set up for all the kids. Congratulations to music director Ms. McKenzie, the band, and the course for the concert. I know Drew mentioned that. It was a great concert. Kids sounded great. My favorite was the Nutcracker three-minute song. It was just peppy and good, and it was, it was a really great concert. Also, thank you to Ms. McKenzie and students Justin Providence, Brendan Havel, Katie Schaefer, Patrick Belt, Nathan Miller, and Dino Birdsong for their morning Christmas music for the students and teachers when they enter the building. So they set up at the front doors, and as the students are coming in in the morning, they're playing Christmas music. It just definitely changes the tone of the day and some energy, and it puts everybody in a good mood. So she's done that for a couple of years, and we really enjoy that. Mrs. Minor also let me know that U of I announced their early admissions decisions over this last weekend. Their engineering school is super, super competitive. The middle 50% of admitted students score between a 31 and a 34 in the ACT. We had three students accepted for the engineering, Alex Barowski, Cody Powers, and Ryan Shineworth. Alex was also offered admission to the honors program. Drew Rokerson was also offered early admission to U of I in their honors college, but had decided on a different route, and I'm going to, some of you already know. Drew was also accepted to the early Wash U admittance program and is going to run across country at Wash U. So congratulations to Drew. School news. All of our clubs, organizations, and teams have been incredibly busy this holiday season, as you can tell from the newspaper and from Drew's report. Raising money, making meals, giving gifts, volunteering their time and energy, the students, the teachers, for those people in need. In all the years that I have been here, I have never seen such an outpouring of volunteer work from our students and our teachers. And it has just been absolutely amazing how much spirit and energy and giving that our school has committed to. It's been a really awesome Christmas season. Upcoming events. Obviously, the Christmas break has started. The kids are enjoying their time off. School will resume Wednesday, January 4th, 2017. The famous, world famous Harlem Wizards will be at FCH on Valentine's Day, 2017. So get your tickets. They're going to be contesting against some of our coaches and grade school coaches. It is a fundraiser for our athletic department, so come on out and save that date. And then this is way, way ahead of time, but our honors banquet has been set for Monday, April 24th. And I know that sounds like it's a long way away, but as soon as the planning and all the awards from the community and the groups and the school, it gets here really fast. A couple of things on the tables. If you look around, there are examples of the 3D ornaments that Mr. Haas's class has been developing for one of the, some of their projects. If you look closely at them, you may see, they have like a single design or two designs, patterns that are repeated. So you've got snowmen, Christmas trees, blue notes. I think I saw Mickey Mouse ears and Mickey Mouse faces, a frog face. The one student who's very, Justin Providence, is very into music and golf, so his is alternating golf clubs and trumpets. The deer they've been making, you can see those around the school. But this is some of the winter projects they've been making with the 3D printer. So they designed it all on computer, and then it prints out, and they really enjoyed it. It's been really good to see all the stuff they've been doing.
This room was my favorite.
You know, they, Mr. Haas, it's like, oh, you've got to put a few of those out there from a Christmas store with the lamp and the legs. So good humor there. Also, a couple of other things. We received an email from an alumni student, which I thought you might enjoy to hear about. And it is from Paige Stabler. It's real short here, I'll just read it. She sent it to Mrs. Minor. Mrs. Minor said, I just wanted to pass along the little info from Paige Stabler. She's been really happy at the Naval Academy, felt well-prepared for the work there, and thinks it's a great choice for her. She is still her incredibly kind self, waiting to answer every question the students had and passing along her email address, so one of them can share a document of questions that he has already compiled that she has offered to answer. She will graduate this spring and has received her appointment with the Academy. She is one of 12 students to receive an appointment to medical school out of a graduating class of about 1,000. She is currently preparing, doing medical school interviews. She doesn't know where she'll end up yet, but will definitely be continuing school next fall. These appointments are incredibly competitive and took years of dedication at the academy. So it's a heck of an accomplishment. So Mrs. Minor passed it on and thought it'd be great to share something about our alumni. So that's really awesome. The last thing I have for you, and I'm not going to read this one, you can read it if you want. It is a five-page essay from senior Kayla Gerber, and she's in Mrs. Westbeker's English class. Kayla wrote an essay about the importance of having a positive student-teacher relationship and the effect of it on the success of school. And in her essay, the teacher that she highlighted as being that positive impact on her was Mr. Matt Bieber. It discusses how he opened the door to her confidence in participating in class and how that carried over into all of her other classes, and she felt that she came into that class, it really just changed the success in her direction of school. So it's a really nice essay. I thought if you're interested in reading it, it's included in the packet.
Any questions for Mrs. Jung? If not, we'll have the superintendent's report.
Okay, I wanted to just point out real quick, the game tomorrow night actually starts at 6:00, and there is no JV game. Columbia had some issues with their JV team together, so varsity starts at 6:00, and I'll go from there. The screen and projector project in the cafeteria should be finished by the start of the school year. Pretty excited. I think that'll be a nice enhancement for the cafeteria's use. The 1% initiative has passed all the districts in St. Clair County, so it will be on the ballot in April. There will be some presentations at the high school regarding that. And I know that one of our big focuses here is going to be trying to find ways to abate some of our taxes if that goes through, that we can try to pay some of our bonds down using that money to start off with. There is a five essential survey that goes out every year. Our students and our teachers have done a wonderful job of participating. We're going to send some more emails out to our parents, but right now, we only have a 7% feedback rate, and we need at least a 20% feedback rate from parents. So we're going to encourage parents to fill that out and provide us feedback so we can help continue improving things around here. First semester's gone very well. I think you heard a lot of things that Bill talked about. But despite the maybe not so ideal start, the kids and the faculty have done a great job. I pulled the van specs out of this board's packet when Dean and I went up to the triple I conference. I spoke to some bus people. I'll talk about that later on. But I have a different idea, and so I'm going to bring that to the board in January about a replacement of a van. I'm also interested in doing an update of our financial situation, kind of go a mid-year financial situation report. Once the calendar year is over, I'll have Diane run some numbers, and I'll bring that back in January, kind of give you guys an idea of where we sit, and present that at the January board meeting. We do have the holiday tournament this weekend, the 26th through 29th. If you like basketball, come and watch the basketball. It's a lot of fun. And then I would also like to wish everybody, not only the board, but the residents of the district, a happy holidays, have Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, please be safe out there, and hopefully, we don't get a repeat of last Friday night. So that's, that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Breaking? If not, we're down to old business. A, re- district reorganization.
Like I said, I think it was in November, the other superintendents and I have met a couple of different times. We do this on a, at least a monthly basis. And so the conversation's continuing as far as, I believe, everybody's still on the same page, that the superintendents for sure are interested in looking at the feasibility and then trying to, if need be, do a study next year and take a look at it. But, you know, there's a lot of conversation that we've had, and again, in my opinion, the big stomach block is going to be the salary schedules, trying to convert those salary schedules. So that's for that one.
Any questions on that? Item B, conduct truth in taxation hearing.
So first, we probably need a motion to go into.
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, I need a motion to go into the taxation hearing. Motion by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Madrell. Those papers say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. We're now in the taxation hearing.
First, hopefully, everybody had a chance. I know the board members have it in their folders, and I put some papers out for the public to take a look at. One of the, an unfortunate thing, I have to take responsibility. I made an error in the notice that was put in the paper. Working through it, I pulled the wrong 2016 estimated revenue and used that to fill out the notice. So once I figured that out, contacted our attorney to find out what steps we needed to take, and the numbers that were presented in November were correct. The total was just incorrect, and that's what generated the error in the notice. So what has to happen is, we have to still go through the truth in taxation. There's a resolution that was written up. We will have to, if it's approved, we will have to put another notice in the paper, and then we're legally have covered our bases as far as the truth in taxation portion. So at this time, if anybody has questions or comments, I will try to answer any questions you have, or if you just have a comment, this would be the appropriate time for that.
No questions or comments?
I was curious about the TORT.
Did you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dirk Downey.
Go ahead.
I was curious about the TORT increase and what that was a result of.
Okay. For the last three or four years, there's been a risk management plan that was put together that identifies different employees at the district that part of their job is to reduce risk to the district, and then what they do and their responsibilities. The effort of the previous superintendent of the board was to use money from the TORT fund to pay those salaries and those fees. And so as a, because of that, we've increased the TORT levy to cover those expenses that are listed in the risk management plan.
So these are professional fees to?
They're salaries. So a portion of my salary, the nurse's salary, the custodian, I mean, bus drivers, all those are listed. The risk management plan's on our website. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. I don't have a copy of it with me tonight, but it's on our website. So it lists probably, I don't know, 15 to 18, maybe a few more salaries, the breakdown of what percentage of their salaries is paid towards, toward, or from the TORT fund.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Just to piggyback on that, in the past, that breakout has not been noted or anywhere that I've seen what those dollar amounts are. Yes, it is in the risk management. Is that going to be broken out this year on the financials so that you can see the dollar amounts of those salaries?
I am not sure if there's a spot to break those out, but I can make that available to show what the salaries are, the percentages, and I can do that, yeah.
I know Dr. Holmes does that at Smithon.
Anyone else?
As far as I am aware, Dr. Holmes doesn't utilize the TORT fund to pay any of the risk management. Is that, is that something changed from this?
I don't know if it's changed. It is what she's told me. So.
Absolutely.
Anyone else at this time? Okay, if not, I do need a motion to go back into the regular meeting. Move on Mr. Towers. Second. Second on Mr. Crawford. Those opposed say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. At this time, we need to approve the tax levy for tax year 2016.
So this will be a, kind of a repeat of November's numbers, and then there is the new resolution that has to be passed to put the new notice in paper. So we'll go through. I'll list the fund. I'll list what the recommended levy is, and then each one will be improved or approved separately. So first is Fund 10, the education fund, recommended the district levy $2,774,400 for fiscal year 2018, to be paid in fiscal year 2018.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Madrell, second.
Second.
By Mr. Haas. So we'll start the voting with Mr. Haas.
Aye.
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 Motion approved.
The special education levy, recommended the district levy $54,400 in this fund to be paid out in fiscal year 2018.
Need a motion?
Aye.
Moved by Mrs. Towers, second by Mr. Parrish. Start voting with Mrs. Towers.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
The Fund 20 operation maintenance levy, recommended the district levy $680,000 to be paid out in fiscal year 2018.
Need a motion?
Aye.
By Mr. Crawford, second. Mr. Henning, start the voting with Mr. Crawford.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
The lease levy, recommended that the district levy $136,000 in the lease fund to be paid out in fiscal year 2018.
Motion.
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Perry, second by Mr. Henning. I'll start the voting with aye.
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 Motion passes.
Bonded interest, this is the fund that the county establishes the rate, but the rate that we are estimating is that it would be $529,000 to cover the funds for the tax year 2018.
Need a motion?
Aye.
Motion by Mrs. Towers, second by Mr. Henning. Start voting with Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
The tuition fund, recommended that we levy $326,400 in this fund to be paid out in fiscal year 2018.
Need a motion?
Aye.
Moved by Mr. Perry, second by Mr. Henning. Start voting with Mr. Henning.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Fund 50 is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. It covers two different levies. The first is a levy for Social Security of $157,000, and then the second is $179,000 for the IMRF, and these will be used in Fund 50 for fiscal year, be paid out fiscal year 18.
Need a motion?
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Madrell. Second by Mr. Crawford. Start voting with Mr. Madrell.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
The working cash, recommended the district levy $136,000 for the working cash fund to be paid out in fiscal year 18.
Need a motion approved?
Aye.
Moved by Mr. Haas, second by Mr. Henning. Those, oops, we start voting with Mr. Haas.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
TORT levy, recommended the district levy $1,305,000 in this fund to be paid out in fiscal year 2018.
Need a motion?
Aye.
由Mr. Crawford, second by Mr. Madrell. Start voting with Mrs. Towers.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Fire safety, recommended levy of $136,000, $1,000 in the fire safety fund to be paid out in fiscal year 2018.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Parrish. We'll start the voting with Mr. Crawford.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. And then at this time, we just will read this resolution for the, for the Jordan Levy. The final aggregate levy for year 2016, whereas the truth in taxation act requires that all taxing districts in the state of Illinois determine the estimated amounts of taxes necessary to be levied for the year not less than 20 days prior to the official adoption of the aggregated tax levy of the district. And whereas, if the estimated aggregate amount is necessary to be levied, exclusion of election costs, exclusion of election costs and bond and interest costs exceed 105% of the aggregated amount of property taxes extended or estimated to be extended, including any amount debated by the taxing district prior to such extension, upon the levy of the preceding year, public notice shall be given, and a public hearing shall be held on the district's intent to adopt the tax levy in an amount which is more than 105% of such extension or estimated extension for the preceding year. And whereas, the tentative levy with an estimated aggregate amount exclusive of the election costs and bond and interest costs exceeding 105% of the aggregate amount of the property taxes extended or estimated to be extended was adopted by the Board of Education of Freeburg Community High School District 77 on November 14, 2016. A copy of the adopted tentative levy is attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference as Exhibit A. And whereas, since the estimated levy exclusive of the election, if the election costs, bond and interest costs exceed 105% of the aggregated amount of property taxes extended or estimated to be extended, notice of proposed property tax increase for Freeburg Community High School District 77 was published on December 15, 2016 in the Freeburg Tribune and the Oakville Times newspapers of general circulation, published in the Freeburg Community High School District 77. A copy of the notice of the proposed property tax increase for Freeburg Community High School District 77 is attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference as Exhibit B. And whereas, the notice of proposed property tax increases for Freeburg Community High School District 77 is not consistent with the tentative levy approved by the Board of Education at its meeting on November 14, 2016, on Exhibits A and B. And whereas, a public hearing on the proposed tax levy increase was held on Thursday, December 22, 2016, at 7:00 PM at the Freeburg Community High School, Iberia, 401 South Monroe Street, Freeburg, Illinois, 62243. And where- And whereas, before public comments were made during the public hearing held in accordance with the notice of proposed property tax increase, Superintendent Greg Frecking discussed the differences and recommended that the Board of Education approve as a final levy the aggregate tax levy as adopted by the Board of Education at its meeting on November fourteen, twenty sixteen. Members of the public were afforded the opportunity to present testimony about the adopted tentative levy, and whereas, the Board of Education, the estimated amount of taxes necessary to be raised by taxation for the year twenty sixteen is as follows. Educational purposes, $2,774, seventy-four and four hundred dollars. Operation and maintenance purposes, $680,000. Transportation purposes, $326,400. Working cash fund purposes, $136,000. Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund purposes, $179,000. Tor community purposes, $1,305,000. Fire prevention and safety, $136,000. Special education purposes, $54,400. Social Security, Medicare, $157,000. Lease levy, $136,000. Bond and interest, $529,000, for a total of $7,413,200. And whereas, since the final aggregated levy is in excess of the proposed levy stated in the notice of proposed property tax increase for Freeburg Community High School District Seventy Seven, the Board of Education is required to provide notice of this action within fifteen days of the adoption of the levy, all in accordance with thirty-five ILCS two-hundred slash eighteen dash eighty-five. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Freeburg Community High School District Seventy Seven, St. Clair and Washington Counties, Illinois, as follows. Section One, aggregated amount of taxes estimated to be levied for the year twenty sixteen Consent with the following. Educational purposes, $2,774,400. Operation and maintenance purposes, $680,000. Transportation purposes, $326,400. Working cash fund purposes, $136,000. Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund purposes, $179,000. Tor community purposes, $1,305,000. Fire prevention and safety, $136,000. Special education purposes, $54,400. Social Security, Medicare, $157,000. Lease levy, $136,000. Bond and interest, $529,000, for a total of $6,413,200. Section Two, the superintendent is hereby directed within fifteen days of the adoption of the final aggregate levy to place notice of the adopted property tax increase for the Freeburg Community High School District Seventy Seven in the Freeburg Tribune and Oakville Times newspaper of general circulation, published in the Freeburg Community High School District Seventy Seven, in the form that is attached heretofu and incorporated herein as Exhibit C. After full discussion thereof, the President directed that the roll be called for a vote upon the motion to be adopted, to adopt the resolution. Upon the roll being called, the following, I guess we need a, need a motion to adopt this resolution. Move by Mrs. Towers. Second by Mrs. Crawford. I guess we need a roll call, this, I'll start it with aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay, whereupon the President declares a motion carried and the resolution adopted and approved, adopted this twenty-second day of December, twenty sixteen. I guess we go down to Item D, approved second reading of forward policies, two-point-one-two-five, four-point-one-seven-five, five-point-six-zero, seven-point-one-nine-zero, seven-point-three-one-five.
Policy two-point-one-two-five is, along with five-point-six-zero, is, has to do with reimbursements to board members and to members of the district for travel expenses. Two-point-one-two-five is the board, so there'll be some paperwork that the board will have to fill out prior to the travel expense, and then after the travel expense, for the actual reimbursement. Four-point-one-seven-five is, makes an adjustment to some background history checks that have to be changed. Five-point-six-zero is the sister of two-point-one-two-five, and that's for all the employees of the district when they are traveling to get reimbursed for that. Seven-point-one-nine-zero is a name change only from student discipline to student behavior, and seven-point-three-one-five is a new policy that lists restrictions for student publication, which many of these are already listed in the handbook.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the policies as mentioned. Motion by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Madrell. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. And I guess at this time, I need to read the resolutions to regulate expense reimburse, reimbursements.
Like, just real quick, there's going to be a couple of numbers that are listed in there, and this is a brand-new policy for everybody in the state, and so depending on who you're, what district and what lawyer you listen to, your policies are going to look different. And so our, the recommendation from our lawyer, when we talk about the reimbursable amount that's listed in this resolution, is the total amount in our budget, which is $78,000, I think, or something. So that's, when you, when you hear that number, that's where that number comes from, that's actual our, our budget number. So what happens is that if we go over that budget amount, then any reimbursements have to be brought up in public, in the public part of the meeting, discuss why we want reimbursement, and so that's how we're set it up.
Ready, all right. Whereas, Section Ten Twenty of the Code grants school boards other powers that are not consistent with their duties. Whereas, Section Ten of the Local Government Travel Expense Control Act provides that school boards shall by resolution regulate the reimbursement of all travel, meals, and lodging expenses of officers and employees, including but not limited to, one, the types of official business for which travel, meals, and lodging expenses are allowed, two, maximum allowable reimbursements for travel, meals, and lodging expenses, and three, a standardized, a standardized form for submission of travel, meals, and lodging expenses supported with minimum documentation. Whereas, the board regulates the type of expenses that are allowed in Board Policies Two-point-one-two-five, and also Board Policy Five-point-six-zero. Whereas, based on the school district's budget and other financial considerations, the superintendent has recommended to the board a maximum allowable reimbursement amount of $78,050 for board members and district staff. Whereas, the board requires submission of appropriate standardized expense forms supported with required written minimum documents, documentation. Whereas, submitted expenses that exceed the board's maximum allowable reimbursements, reimbursement amounts may be approved by a roll call vote in an open meeting of the board when an emergency or other extraordinary circumstances exist. Whereas, all board member expenses must be approved by a roll call vote in an open meeting of the board. Therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby defines and sets the types of allowable expenses through Board Policies Two-point-one-two-five and Five-point-six-zero. Set the maximum allowable reimbursement for travel, meals, and lodging expenses to an amount not to exceed $78,050, effective on January seventeenth, until the resolution is rescinded or replaced by the board. Supercedes its previous adoption, previously adopted resolution to regulate expenses reimbursement as of the effective date in paragraph, in paragraph two above. Requires use of Board Exhibits Two-point-one-two-five EI and Board Member Expense Reimbursement Form, Two-point-one-two-five E-two, Board Member Estimated Expense Approval Form, Five-point-six-zero E-one, Employee Expense Reimbursement Form, and Five-point-six-zero E-two, Employee Estimated Expense Approval Form. May approve expenses that exceed the board's maximum allowable reimbursement amount by a roll call vote in an open meeting when an emergency or other extraordinary circumstances exist. Must approve its members' expenses by a roll call vote at an open meeting. We need a motion on that, we need a motion to accept that resolution. Moved by Mr. Haas. Second by Mr. Madrell. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Resolution's adopted. Oh, the public report for the Board of Education, is that where we're at?
You want me to go first?
Yeah, give me a break.
So I had the pleasure to travel to Chicago last month with Dean and our wives, and so I, I kind of want to let everybody know the things that I picked up there. I spent a fair amount of time, especially the first morning at the vendor hall, going through, talking to some of the vendors. We're looking at, we're looking at our bus situation, so I spoke with some vendors on what's available out there for small buses and activity buses. I also talked to some vendors about student management systems, because we're not, hopefully this doesn't go out too far, we're not real thrilled with what we have right now, looking at possibly changing our student management system, and then also our teacher evaluation programs that they have out there, there's a lot more user-friendly teacher evaluation program. So those are some of the things that I kind of walked around and talked to. I went to a, several new superintendent sessions, and these were kind of roundtable sessions where other new superintendents met with some more senior superintendents and our mentors, which we have a group that we attend, and so that was very good, to share what was going on in our districts, and realizing that we're experiencing the same thing as other people are in their first year. One of the highlights for me was Joan London of Good Morning America fame, was one of the guest speakers, and she spoke for about ninety minutes, I don't remember which morning, but Saturday morning, and was very inspirational, talking about her professional life and her personal life, so that was really good. Tended session put on by Dr. Brent Clark, who's the ISA Director on Evidence-Based Funding Model, that's a big talk up at the state, it's, it'd be wonderful, my concern with everything else in the state of Illinois is where are they going to get the money to implement it? I went to several sessions on working with new school board members, and trying to, one of the school districts that put this on actually bring school board members after elections in and kind of have sessions to try to mesh everybody together so that they can kind of understand where everybody's coming from, try to get on the same page. And then our least highlight of the evening was a legislative update, talking about all the things that could be coming down the pipe. In the lame-dunk session, which is probably going to happen in the next two or three weeks, things like changes in school funding, pension reform, funding shifts, possible statewide tax caps, so, you know, this time next year could, undoubtedly going to be a lot of changes, and so that'll be interesting to see how that, all that pans out, and how we're going to have to jump through some boos.
Any questions? Okay. The first session I was at was on tax caps and freezes. At this session, the presenters gave summaries of the PTL law. They also talked about property tax freeze legislation, that's part of Governor Rauner's turnaround agenda. The legislation will freeze property tax extensions and limit property tax increases to new construction, recovered TIF values, and voter-approved rate increases. There right now are two, occur, two bills in the state legislature pertaining to the property tax freeze. One is Senate Bill Three-eighteen, and that would cap property taxes statewide for two years and have a CPI escalator. The other bill is, is House Bill Six-Ninety-Six, that would also be statewide, will not have a CPI escalator and no sunset. They also talked about the impact of the freezes on tax cap district and on non-tax cap district. Also went to a legislative review. It was noted by the presenters that last year was record funding levels for the schools last year. They also mentioned that it's Speaker Manigan's priority for next year to get the budget resolved, which I'll leave him want to see that. Also, the Senate President would like to see more funding for Chicago schools. Also mentioned the governor would like to see the state be a more business-friendly, and he also wants to save money by prioritizing social services. The legislature would like to see an equitable and adequate school funding formula, which nobody knows what that's going to be. It's supposed to increase revenues and bring down the debt, and they also mentioned that it's possible that, I don't know if you heard anything, that, that they may drop driver's ed as high school curriculum. And the other one I went to was superintendent evaluation process. Topics discussed at this session were why you need to conduct a superintendent evaluation, setting expectations, development of written district goals, agreement on performance indicators, develop an evaluation instrument, and the handtable performance review. And then lastly, I was, the IASB delegate assembly, it was pretty calm except for one resolution that was pretty intensely debated. The resolution was that the ISA, the ISAB would support legislation that would not require school districts to be financially accountable for special needs student, special needs student services beyond your nineteenth birthday. It, and plus the student had to have required credits for graduation. Many of the delegates opposed to it, to the resolution felt that the special needs students would benefit greatly with two more years of education, and in the end, the resolution was voted not to adopt, so they're keep the twenty-one-year-old age there. That was my conference. And we go down to new business, Item A, approved curriculum changes.
There are three different departments that we're looking at, some fairly heavy changes. The first is the business department, so we're looking to eliminate some courses that the material of the courses are dated, it's using some software that is just not used out in public in a very wide manner, and so what they would like to replace this is with two semester courses, one that's a digital literature. One, that's a digital literacy and responsibility course that'll talk specifically about what digital literacy and responsibility is. The second is a computer operations and programming course, which is a coding course, and as the students get more, both of these would kinda be self-paced courses, so that there's not a set curriculum. The kids will kinda work through different projects through the courses. The coding course is gonna be depending on the level of the student, they can progress quicker than other students, and as the teacher gains more, what's the word I'm looking for, experience with the coding, they're gonna try to keep expanding that. Right now, they just wanna start it off with just the, the first coding class. They did not think that there needs to be any new textbooks, so this, this will not, this will not be a cost to the district. So that is what they're looking to do in the business department. So nobody had any questions on that.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the changes to the business curriculum as presented. Move by Mr. Parrish.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crawford. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes.
In the social studies department, there's quite a few changes. Some of them are just simply name changes. I've got a lot of it listed here. The, the big changes come in junior and senior year. Junior year, they are, because of the consumer ed requirement that's been put in place, they have to revamp our senior seminar course and make that a little more heavy in the consumer ed, so that's gonna happen senior year. Junior year, they're interested in adding an advanced placement American Government class, so that course would kinda piggyback the A P U S history that we have now. It would be the second dual-credit course in the department. Students would not have to take A P American History if they take A P U S History, but they are not precluded from taking A P American Government if they don't take American History. And then that's gonna be matched up with a regular American Government and then also a contemporary U S History. Some of the things, modern history would be paired with American Government as a semester course. Students who take A P U S History, I just mentioned that, would not have to take the A P American Government. Students that took the A P U S History would not be required to take contemporary U S History since that material's already covered. Students who did not take the A P U S History and wish to take A P American Government would be able to do so, but they need permission, just like they do to get an A P U S History. But we need to take one semester of modern American History to meet the social studies requirements, and then they're gonna rename modern U S History to contemporary U S History. So a lot of these are trying to align with the standards that are being pushed down and also the changes in the consumer ed requirement. These are changes that the department has actually been pushing for, for about three years now, and certain people have been dragging their feet, and so I kinda stepped out of the way and let Mrs. Young and Mrs. Minor work with them, and they've come up with a very good plan, and I, I think it's a good plan to go with. It'll probably take two years to implement fully. They will not be able to just flop everything over for next year, so these are changes, and then, all these will come out in January, when Mrs. Minor and Mr. Young start working on the schedule for next year.
Any questions?
The only question I can answer is, how does that affect the juniors now that there'll be seniors next year?
So that's the two-year plan. So those juniors would still take the senior seminar that they would've taken normally, so they, they're, they're not gonna be disrupted.
Right, so basically it would be...
So it'll be, the freshmen sophomore, theirs will be flip-flopped when they become juniors and seniors, yeah. That's where the two-years come from.
The extra A P courses, those are of the type that for a fee, they can take an equivalency test at the end of the...
Correct. Right. And our A P U S History has had more students pass that than any other advanced placement. So that, that instructor does a wonderful job. They're not looking at that person to teach it, they're looking at a different person to teach it, but our history students have been very, very strong, so I would anticipate we'd have a large group that would wanna take that test, and so that'll kind of tell.
On that subject, I mean, I'm thrilled that we're expanding any type of, any type of credit that the kids can get towards, towards college. Could we get some, some numbers as far as how many people, how many students take our advanced placement classes and then successfully, successfully pass those tests by, maybe by class?
Yes.
Versus, versus, just to compare that with like the SLU membership, which, those classes, I mean, for, it's four fifty-six or four eighty...
The one eight, one eight classes. The one eight, one eight classes.
Right, yeah. For, for a four hundred and fifty-six dollar fee, so it, it is much more expensive than taking that test, but you do get SLU credit for those, those courses.
And it's a lot less expensive taking them here versus taking them at SLU when you get to be a college kid.
Oh, sure. I mean, for four fifty-six, and, when you compare that to a whole, a whole class at a, at a university, it's a significant save. I'm just, I...
Right. The requirement for the teacher is quite a bit higher for the one eight.
Yes.
So I know the, the teacher that we just hired to teach the chemistry, the college chemistry and things, they're, they're actually having to go and take more additional classes. This is, Ted's pretending to do the same thing for her one eight, one eight in psychology, so there, there are additional requirements for the instructor, so it's, it's a little bit easier to get an A P class in than it is, so that's probably why, one reason is why they look at A P.
Any other questions? If not, I need a motion to, to make the changes to the social, social studies department. Motion by Mrs. Towers. Second by Mr. McGraw. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Passes. Agricultural department.
So, this has been a discussion ongoing for probably close to a year now, a little more, about expanding our ag program to a full-time program, and, so this is taking the first steps to do that. Currently, we teach three ag classes, agricultural science, horticulture, and landscaping. What we're looking to add, we would, we would, are looking next year at dropping landscaping. There's only fifteen students in that class right now as opposed to over twenty in the other classes. And then introducing three new classes, an introduction to agriculture, which for ag programs, that's the, the first-class students would take. It talks about all the different aspects of ag. It also talks about what's involved in F F A, and so it's, it's to kinda help build that program. Agricultural business, which students can complete that and qualify for the consumer ed proficiency for the state of Illinois. So of course, that talks about all the different aspects of business, feelings in agriculture. We have quite a few students that when they leave here in agricultural program, go into insurance or go into, you know, over at F S, and actually this would benefit them. A biological science, which is taught through the ag. It breaks it up into animal and plant, and that would actually replace our physical science course that we have now. And then the last one would be, and a new course, environmental science, and with everything that's going around in the world, I think that's one of the popular courses that students would want. Like I mentioned earlier, there are probably fifty to sixty courses that are available for the ag teachers to teach, and what we envision is somewhat of a rotation, not necessarily every year, but as interest arises and as we see the students that come in in one direction, we can, we can adjust our courses from year to year on what we can teach. But, so we're looking to drop landscaping and add introduction agriculture, agricultural business, biological sciences, and environmental science.
So we wouldn't have any physical sciences up here?
Well, it would be called biological sciences, so the students, it's still science, would still be a science credit. It's gonna cover the same kinda things. It's just because we are replacing a half-time ag and an half-time science, this is our way to be able to meet the needs of that particular students with this class.
Any other questions? If McGraw looks like he has a question.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, is there a pulse, aside from faculty meeting, a pulse that you can put your finger on in the community, in the agricultural community in terms of fights, trends, employment numbers, or anything like that, and just serious evidence in this study, and there were some considerations in that?
I mean, our, I guess my answer to that is, I don't really know. I, I haven't reached out to the community. I know with our F F A alumni, it's very strong, and we have a core group of students right now, and what we're looking at is trying to expand it, to bring more students in that are, and there's a lot of things that we can teach in that department that are not just strictly ag. And so one of the other things we talked about was like animal science, eventually bringing in animal science, because we do have students who do some vet tech kinda thing. So we're trying, we're, we're trying to, through conversations with their counselor and the conversations they've had with different students on what their interests are, and kinda what students are going to college for, we're trying to meet some of those needs. We're, we're not gonna meet them every year, but that's why I said if we can rotate some of these, that maybe they can take a course their junior year and then another course their, their senior year to hit some of their interests.
Any other questions? If not, I need a motion to approve the change to the agricultural, agricultural education department. Motion by Mr. Henning.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGraw. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Board correspondents, there's none, I assume?
No.
No addenda items, so we're down to closed session. Any motion, you go into closed session. Move by Mr. Crawford. Second by Mrs. Towers. We need a roll call at, and so Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
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 Aye. So we're now in closed session. I'd like to begin with everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and have a good rest of the evening.